I'd like to call the Monday, December 12th, 2022 zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Would we all please stand, face the flag, and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Member Krug?
Here.
Chair McAlpine?
Here.
Member Euler?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Ward?
Here.
Member McDonald?
Here.
And Member Sayer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Perfect. We will proceed with approval of the agenda, which is up next. We have the agenda in front of us. There are, there is one application and a calendar review, as well as potentially other business and public comments. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented unless there's any changes or revisions.
Support, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We can just do an all?
You can just do a voice vote, yeah.
Yep. So all in favor of approving the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the minutes that were included in our packet. It was the last meeting we had, which was on October 10th, 2022. If everyone has had a chance to review those, we can either discuss any revisions, changes, or additions, or we can entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I'll move that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Voice call again?
Yeah.
All right, we will take a voice call vote once again. All those in favor of approving the minutes from our meeting on October 10th, 2022, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, the minutes have been approved. We have no new business on our agenda, so we will move on to new business. The item that we have in front of us is application PVA 1122. It is 3618 Phillips Avenue, and the request is for a dimensional variance, is to modify the roof line and construct a front porch. The petitioners are David and Lisa Baker. And if we can go ahead and just get some background on the case or the application, that would be great.
Sure, I can give you a brief overview this evening. So as was stated, this is at 3618 Phillips. This is on the east side of Phillips between 12 Mile and Edwards. The applicant in this case is proposing an extension to their existing porch, as well as a change in the roof line to their existing home. They're requesting three variances. One is to allow for the new roof line. If you'll notice in the packet material, this particular home is nonconforming. It doesn't meet the current front yard setback. In this case, we look to the average front yard setback because it is the greater of the two in this particular zoning district, the single-family district. So the average front yard setback is 26.33 feet. This home is setback 21 feet. So they're seeking a variance for that front yard setback. They're also seeking a variance for the porch extension. A porch is allowed to extend into the front yard setback, but no more than 15 feet. In this case, the porch extends a little bit further into the setback and is 13 feet from the front property line. So that is also an existing nonconforming situation that they're looking to extend parallel to the home, so not encroaching any further than it currently does, but making the porch larger. The last variance is to allow those changes to an existing nonconforming structure, which is something we've seen, I think, the past two or three times, that cases have been before you. So those are the three items. The applicant is here this evening. You'll notice in my staff report, there are motions for approval and denial available to you if you would like to grant some, but not all of the variances. So for example, if you were to entertain the porch extension, but not the roof line or vice versa, in that case, you would need to make separate motions. That's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Do we have any questions regarding this application before we proceed and bring the petitioner? Okay, if you would like to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and tell us a little bit about what you're requesting.
Okay, my name is Lisa Baker, and I reside at 3618 Phillips. And let me first apologize that you're stuck with me tonight because my husband is the construction gentleman, but he installs lockdown systems for school districts. So as you can imagine, he's very busy right now, and he's in Kansas. So normally, he would be standing here doing this. So I'm going to try to explain it as much as possible, as easy as I can. So the, we purchased this home in 1999, and the porch and the porch roof are, is the only structure that is from the original. To be honest, I'm not sure when the house was built. I believe like 1928 or '30 or something like that, but we purchased it in 1999. And that how, the house was, that porch and the foundation was as existent as it is then when we came in with that. So, and the porch roof, because of it being the original, is in desperate need of the porch roof to be replaced. You can't even repair it. It needs to be replaced. So if we're going to repair this, replace this, we want to do it right. So, and to affect the curb appeal and functionality, the look of it and functionality. So what we want to do is, we'd like to keep the porch as it is. Right now, it's, well, the foundation part is 21 feet, as it says in here, 21 feet. That was what, how it was when we purchased. The foundation of the house is 21 feet to the sidewalk. And then we have eight feet of porch. And then, so that would leave 13 feet to the sidewalk. That will all remain the same as how we purchased it, that way. What we want to do is add a few feet south and a few feet north to match the existing of the house, the house foundation. And so to do this also, we need to redo the pitch for it, the roof for it with that. And as I said, we're mainly doing this to improve the whole look, curb appeal, and the functionality of the entire front of the house with doing that. Like, we're hoping to leave the porch as is, just adding, it's going to be about four feet, five feet going one way, and then about six feet going that, going the other, going north with it on that. And then while we're doing that, the pitch, I think it's called a hip roof, I'm not exactly sure, but when we-
Dad says yes.
Okay. David's on the, he's on the phone, just in case if there's questions I can't answer this way. He's, he's, he's available. But with that, when we renovated that part of the house back in 2005 or '06 or things along, when we added the second floor to it, that pitch of that roof needed to be kind of, if I want to say blended into the original porch roof. So what we want to do is replace that, the doghouse, the old doghouse that's in front, and have a nice pitch, and then with the porch pitch following it. So it all blends in, and it covers. And I, what I would like to do is do a wraparound porch, because we have that area next to our driveway, there's a big area on the driveway, and we're on our porch all the time. So I'm sure you guys know, in Berkeley, everybody's on their porch. But, so to have it wrap around right by our driveway there. So-
The roof is deteriorating already. The, that's why we want to-
You know what, yeah, we, I just have to have like one person talking, or I have to have-
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't even know how we could do it.
So you-
Yeah, or we could just have him talk separately, right?
At the podium would be fine.
Yeah, you can just, yeah, you can just come up.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's the whole thing, is just that the roof, the, obviously, the porch roof is, needs to be replaced completely. But the hip roof, that we did back in the 2000 or whatever, we were trying to blend it in, and it's kind of, I don't know, it's, it's not, there's, north meets south meets west, it's not blended correctly. And it, so we're going to redo the whole thing and make it. So we're not adding any living space. We're just redoing the pitch of the existing roof and adding the new roof to the porch. Does that make sense? Okay. Sorry.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner?
Yes, you may.
Go ahead.
So we're, we're looking at adding north and south on the porch, correct?
Correct.
And then, I believe it's the, the south side, it looks like you're going to add almost four feet or three and a half feet to the existing porch.
On the south side?
Yeah.
Yes, it's just going to, it's going to-
You're just extending the porch to the south, which will be at the corner of the house, the existing house.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then on the north side, the same thing, but you're going to wrap around.
Correct. Yes. And while we're doing all this change to the front of the porch, to improve functionality in our front room, we're going to move, the house will be the same, but we're going to move a door, move the front door over where a window is right now.
That is nothing, nothing to do with the variance.
So the variance is really related to the setbacks?
Okay, okay.
Not even the extension of the porch?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Ward?
Um, yes. I, I noticed that you had a professional architect do your plans.
Correct.
Was there any consideration given to trying to minimize the necessary variances by feet as opposed to going with such a extravagant remodel and trying to stay within the limits of the ordinance that, you know, says it shouldn't exceed 25.33 feet, et cetera? Was there any consideration given by the architect when he or she designed this?
I believe the talk, they did talk of that, but because of it being existing foundation and existing as it is right now, you know, it's-
But the existing foundation is nonconforming.
Correct.
Yeah, it's nonconforming.
So I can't, yeah.
They would have to shrink it to make it-
Yeah.
Right, I don't think they could, it's unreasonable to expect them to conform to do this.
Right, and I mean, and in, on our street, you know, two doors down at 3650, they're 21 feet also. Diane at 36841, across the street, they're 24 feet. So I think it's when the homes were built back when, hit and miss, the older homes, I think it, they're maybe a little bit farther up, closer to the sidewalk than they are.
Well, just based upon having driven up and down your block, and it's a lovely neighborhood, it really is.
Thank you.
I noticed that most of the homes are set back sufficient, sufficiently to coincide with the ordinance. My concern is what we're doing here would change the character of your home, which would then impact the remainder of the neighborhood, the other homes in the neighborhood. Everybody is pretty well set back in conformance. Your neighbor has an exception, she's 24, so she's a foot and 33 outside. So the concern that I have is to maintain the beauty of the neighborhood and not change the appearance by bringing a house closer to the sidewalk. And even though, unfortunately, we are in a nonconforming situation, the porch is still not in conformity with-
Right.
-what is current code. And yes, your home was built in the '30s or the '20s, and they didn't have codes back then.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I have a, so I'm, I'm just not understanding the roof part. Like, so as the porch exists, you could just put a new roof on it, correct?
Uh, we could, you mean, the porch roof or the house?
Keep it the same size and put a new roof on it.
Not the porch roof, we can't. We need to put a whole, we have to put a new, yes, we need to put a new roof completely.
Right, but I guess my question is, the porch doesn't have to be bigger to put a new roof on it, correct?
Uh, correct, it doesn't.
Okay.
But I would like to enhance my curb appeal.
Right.
Drive around Berkeley, and you've got these beautiful homes with their, and that's what people see from the first thing that they see.
No, I don't disagree, I'm just, I wasn't understanding the pitch thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's the first thing they see. And actually, we've built this home, we've rendered, made, done all the renovations ourself.
Is it a double lot?
Pardon me?
Is it a double lot?
It is. It is, it's a double lot. So that's the only thing that is original, is the porch and porch roof. So, and I, it's really the thing that's going to, is curb appeal. It's going to increase it, total turnaround.
Chair McAlpine, if I, if I may interject for a moment, and I'm sorry, I didn't know, I don't want to cut you off.
No, please, yeah.
A couple of things I want to just kind of emphasize in this particular case. So the applicant is requesting these variances because they are, they are making changes to a nonconforming structure. And theoretically, sure, they could take down the porch and move it back an additional two feet, but they have made an effort to not go any farther into the allowable setback than what currently exists. So they're not extending beyond the current foundations of the porch.
You're going out sideways, which does not make it any closer.
Worse, right. It doesn't make it any worse than what is currently there. So I just wanted to emphasize that, particularly in response to Member Ward's comments. I do think that they made an effort to not go further, and they're not coming to you and asking for-
Buy more feet to go out closely.
Yes, to make a very large deck-like porch or something like that. They are staying within the current nonconforming setback.
Thank you. And the steps that are in that print go, are facing forward, like towards the street? That's not going to happen. They're going, they're going to have them set, so it won't be going farther to the street.
Okay.
They're going to be going down the side.
Towards the driveway.
Towards the driveway, which is what our stairs are, which is what our stairs are now.
Yeah, the stairs are to the side.
They go to the driveway, and that's the whole point of the wraparound, the driveway, get out of the car, walk up the steps. And then this way, we're not going any farther into the sidewalk area with that.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions for the petitioner, we'll close that portion and see if there's anyone from the audience who wishes to speak as well.
I mean, the drawing does show the steps going to, in the front, so-
I'm sorry?
The drawing does show the steps coming out at the front.
Correct, correct.
So is the drawing incorrect?
We'll change, yes, yeah, we're, that's not going, it's just that, because we're had, had this professionally done for the first time, it's quite expensive to change those steps around.
But we can also put that in, if we were to make a motion to approve the request, we could just state that the steps need to go along the porch and should not extend beyond that 21 feet.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience who wishes to speak? If you could come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Diane Wieland. I live at 3641 Phillips. I am one of the older homes on the block. My house was built in 19, I think, '29, '28, as the other old homes are that extend further. We have the large front porch. We consider that having a large porch increases the family neighborhood. If you're in your backyard, that's wonderful, I love our backyards, but if you're in the front, that's neighborhood. We're always on our front porches, we talk to the people going by, we talk to each other. If they're able to extend the porch, I don't have to sit on the step anymore, I'll have space on the porch to actually sit. It's just extending it lengthwise, and I think it will make the house just look more beautiful. Again, we love our porches, we think it's what makes Berkeley Berkeley, family neighborhoods. That's it.
Okay, so before we proceed, I do want to just clarify for the record that there are five criteria in which we must meet, and each of those have to be met in order for the variance to be approved. The first one is, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The next one is, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. The third one is, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The fourth one is, the request for the variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the property owners. And the final one is, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. So we can, it sounds like we might want to break all three items up, does that make sense?
Yes, yes.
So what we will do is, we will evaluate each of the requests based upon those criteria. And in order to approve your request, we do need to relate everything to those standards to make our decision. So the first request, if we want to proceed with that one, is the minimum average front yard setback is 26.3, I'm sorry, hold on, I'm just trying to get, I might be in the wrong spot. So we want, we do need to discuss that one, and then we'll go to the other ones. And that is, ordinance front setback is 25 feet or equal to the average of the six adjacent buildings on the same block. And they're currently at 21 feet, so we do need to discuss that one first.
Chair McAlpine, if I may, I just wanted to note for the record that we didn't receive any email.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, so we didn't receive any correspondence or email.
I was just going to ask that, yeah.
So we have no other correspondence, we did have the one neighbor who came up and spoke as well, so. Okay, so the first one, like I said, is the setback as they've requested. We have any thoughts, discussion on that one?
I think as Kristin said, they are making every effort to maintain their current footprint. And in that case, I think it makes sense to, as opposed to having the expense of taking it back and losing that space, I do think it makes sense to maintain it the way it is.
So are you making a motion?
And if no one has any concerns about it, I will.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding this item, this request? If not, we will go ahead and listen to your motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the setback of 21 feet, which is 5.3 feet less than what the rest of the area is, due to the unique circumstance and not due to the property owner's own actions, that they bought the property and it was already in existence. Strict compliance would mean they would lose space, so it would kind of penalize them if they, if we didn't approve it. And it will do them justice, they're not asking for more, so it makes sense to allow it, and it will not adversely affect the surrounding area.
Second.
Can we just add one thing that just says something like, you want to approve this variance, given it is a current, current nonconforming use or something, just so we have that in there as well?
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, if we could have a vote, please?
Member McDonald?
Approve.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Member Sayer?
Yes.
Member Euler?
No.
Member Ward?
No.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the next one is the request for the porch, and that is to, the porch must be 15 feet from the property line, so if we would like to open up discussion amongst ourselves for this request as well. They, it must be 15 feet, and their current porch is proposed as an existing nonconforming property, is 13 feet from the property line. And they're requesting a variance of two feet.
I think it's basically the same circumstance as the other, the other variance in that it's an existing issue. But I'd, I'd be curious to hear the people that didn't-
I know on some of the other variance requests, we hesitated in granting five inches, if you remember, I think it was two meetings ago, that the petitioner just needed five and a half feet. And we said, okay, or five and a half inches. And we said, okay, today it's five, next week it'll be 10, and next week it'll be 15. And even though this is a request for only two feet, again, I just am concerned that there is going to be, it will affect the rest of the neighborhood. And even though right now it is at the 13 feet, basically what we're doing is grandfathering this in. I think also, if we are going to do a, on the front property line, that we need to include the fact that the steps will come off the side of the porch as opposed to off the front as the drawing indicates.
Are there any other comments?
I want to make a couple of comments on that. Number one, this is an existing foundation.
Right.
Couple meetings ago, somebody wanted to actually build something new that, that needed that, which I think is a total different game.
Right, yeah.
I have a question too. The, the new porch, is it okay?
Go ahead, we'll ask you.
Yeah, I have one more question that, I'm not sure, the existing porch that you currently have is 13 feet from the sidewalk?
Correct.
The front of it?
Yes.
So in other words, that has, you're just going the right way either side.
The petitioner, they're not asking to go beyond where they're currently on.
Because it says new, yeah, it says new porch, you know, on the, but I guess that just means-
South and north will be new.
Yes, the distance-
It's a big cement block.
The extended distance is no difference.
You know, I think we're, yeah.
It's currently nonconforming at 13 feet, they want to keep it currently nonconforming at 13 feet.
And then that motion would also add the north side be the where the steps go.
Steps go.
I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Krug, we are simply looking at an existing nonconforming
use.
Use. Versus someone who's looking to add on, make an addition, and is asking for some variances. In this particular case, they are going the opposite direction instead of out, which I think is totally appropriate, because they are working with their existing foundation.
Yeah, well, they're elongating the length of the porch.
I mean, I think it'll look fine, you know, I don't dispute that, and I almost, I kind of want them to get it, but it doesn't meet number three. I mean, I don't see how anyone's ever going to make a rational argument that it meets number three when you're talking about, you know, curb appeal and, like if I, you know, if I, if I take my phone and hold it, you know, here to her, that's different than if I take my computer and hold it like that to her. It's the same distance, but, you know, they don't have to have a bigger porch, they, they can live there without having a bigger porch, so it doesn't meet number three. Having said that, I think it'll look great, and I don't really have a-
Number three is in the strict compliance of the ordinance, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted use or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome.
Mr. Euler, perhaps, looking at the fact that it currently is nonconforming?
No, I understand-
No, I understand.
Could justify, yeah.
That's why, that's why I asked the question.
And I agree with you that, and that was why I voted no on the other one, because it didn't meet the requirements of strict compliance with the ordinance.
But I mean, I disagree with the part about that it'll look bad or it'll make the neighborhood look bad, just based on being down that street. But I, you know, I think you have to be careful about people coming in front of us with ordinances or for variances, and they're talking about, you know, curb appeal. You know, that's not, everybody, it's nice, but you can live there without curb appeal. I mean, it looks pretty appealing to me already, but, you know, it's a lot bigger than my house.
More porch area, more functionality, yes. Curb appeal is really not, it will look nice, but.
It's a term that has been dreamed up by HGTV.
So how would we like to proceed? We, any more questions or discussion? Not, we can entertain a motion?
I thought Ms. Seer, Council, a board member, Seer made a motion?
Are you going to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so if you'd like to just let us know, if you'd like to offer up the motion for consideration?
Okay. Once again, I move that we approve the variance to, to the front porch coming out 13 feet instead of 15 feet, with the exception of, or with the change to the stairs, instead of coming off the front, they come off the north side of the porch, due to the fact that the variance is due to the circumstances prior to the owners purchasing the property. It was non-conforming when they bought it, and it maintains that. It doesn't go further. It's not a result of the actions that they did, was previous to them. Compliance with the ordinance would require it to be made smaller or reduce the amount of porch and front area. The variance is the minimum based on the fact that it's what they have currently. Basically, it was non-conforming. They're not increasing it, and it will not adversely affect the surrounding properties.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a support. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Krug?
Yes.
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Member Sear?
Yes.
Member Euler?
No.
Member Ward?
No.
Member Willner?
Yes.
And Member McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the third and final request or variance that they're requesting is to make an addition to a non-conforming structure. They now must conform to ordinance regulations. The existing dwelling with an altered roof line and existing porch are proposed. A porch addition do not meet the required setbacks, and therefore they're requesting a variance to make an addition to a non-conforming structure that does not meet the applicable zoning ordinance regulations. So in this case, they are just asking to make those changes to the roof as the addition to the non-conforming structure. And if there's any comments or questions, we can go ahead and handle those now, yes?
This is where I have an issue, or I agree with Mr. Euler, that this is clearly, you're adding an addition, and it's, it has to follow what the current ordinance states. And unfortunately, that's two feet too wide of a porch being added on. And I can understand the conform, the non-conform part of the porch that that foundation is there, but adding the addition, it clearly states that you have to follow the current zoning ordinance, and I don't believe it does.
But by approving the other, the previous two requests.
Set it up for that.
Said that you were, you're allowing that, so you're kind of contradicting yourself.
And technically, for them to even put a new roof structure on the existing porch, they'd have to get a variance. I mean, they wouldn't be allowed to do that either, even if they kept that porch the same size and tried to put a new roof structure on it. They would not be allowed to do that because it's non-conforming.
No, I don't think that's right. I think they could put a new roof on.
They could put a, yeah, Mr. Euler asked that question.
As far as the actual building.
They would have to replace it exactly as is.
Yes, yes. Yeah, but I still wouldn't be compliant.
But you wouldn't be changing the non-conformity.
You wouldn't change anything. It would remain the same. So you wouldn't need a variance.
Default of approving the other two, you essentially said you're allowing.
I do think they are not going out past the footprint of the home, though, which, so really, they're not making it over the current size of the house. So it's not really encroaching.
But the roof line, or the roof per se, the existing roof, could be replaced, and there would be, if they made it the same size as what is currently there, they could replace it as indicated that the roof is in very bad condition.
By default, almost by approving the other, then that one should have come first, really, because we've already approved the other two, so almost by default, you, how can you not approve the non-conforming? You'd almost have to vote on that first, and then.
Yeah, the order wouldn't matter in particular, but you're right, they're kind of a pair, a set.
If you approve the other two, you've already essentially approved.
Set it up.
The changes for the non-conforming.
Right, so you, you could have approved variance number three, the one you're talking about now, and then asked the applicant to consider a lesser variance or something like that. But by approving the first two, correct? It would be quite a conundrum to not approve variance number three, having approved the first two.
So is your concern sightlines for that?
For me?
Yeah.
No, it's not the sightlines, it's the, when you read it, it is clear that any additions to a non-conforming building have to be conforming. They have to be follow the current, so.
Unless you have, unless you get a.
A variance.
A variance.
Right, correct.
But what we're saying here is that it would unreasonably present, prevent them from using the property, but if we can make them comply, I'm assuming there's issues with the walls, the foundation, the roof, all those things in order to bring them into conformance is actually putting a burden, is burdensome for the homeowner, given the fact that it doesn't comply. So we can either take a non-compliant and keep it non-compliant, or make them comply, which I don't think is, you know, the fair, the right thing to do, even taking away the look of it. Just given the age of the house and the current structure and footprint of the house, that's what we're dealing, we're dealing with a non-conforming home.
Yeah, but to your, what you were alluding to, the first two are, we're dealing with the non-conformity of the current structure. And we're agreeing that, yeah, they're 13 feet is the front porch, and at 20, whatever it was, 21 feet is the front of the house. And we're not asking for them to make that into ordinance in the first two.
Or tear it down.
Yeah, or tear it down or change it or anything like that. That was just to set this up so that we go to the third one that says, okay, now if the first two are good, then the third one, though, is asking for, on top of the first two, additions that are now brand new.
The only reason they did the first two is because of the addition on the third.
Right, they wouldn't ask for the first two otherwise.
Again, like you said, we should have started with the third one first.
Any other comments?
A motion on the table? Is there a motion? No.
That we have a motion on the table? Basically, we've approved the setback, we've approved the porch. Now what we're saying is, they can't proceed because it's non-conforming. Does that make sense what we're saying?
I don't think everybody said that.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying, like, I mean, that, so that's what.
I said Meischfield, but it was five to two before, and it doesn't sound like it's gonna change that much.
I'll make a motion to approve. I mean, I'll make a motion. A motion to approve the addition to the non-conforming structure. After physical condition of the property, the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application, application as well as on the property owners. And the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion and a support on the table. If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Member Sear?
Yes.
Member Euler? Member Ward?
No.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
No.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Motion passes four to three.
Okay, so you are all set. We just need to make sure that they, that it is in the record about the stairs, which I believe we've covered, and you will be able to proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Next up on the agenda is the 2023 Zoning Board of Appeals' calendar dates. Sorry about that. They were included in our packet, and I think just key to note, I apologize, I did not save those two, but there are two dates in which we are impacted that have the Tuesday, Janu, so our meeting in January, which normally would be on January 9th, is on January 10th, which is a Tuesday once again. And then the meeting on August 15th would normally be held on Monday, August 14th. That is delayed for City Council as well. All other meetings would be held on Monday, and the calendar is here. Do we need a motion, or is it just for our records?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do need a motion.
Okay.
This does not in any way interact with any holidays within the community as written.
Yeah, I, that's a very good question, Member Ward. I tried to go through the calendar and cross-reference all of these days and make sure we weren't running into anything. If there's any, anything anyone's aware of, please let me know, but I couldn't find any conflicts with holidays or traditional, you know, times that people are traveling or anything. It looks like this would be good to go. I did check that, but if there's something that someone else is aware of, or.
One of our previous board members always checked to make sure that it did not impact any holidays in his calendar. And so I just want to make sure that we are respectful of everyone's holidays.
Thank you for doing your due diligence.
Yes.
So we have the calendar as it is presented, and we do need, we can do a voice call vote?
That's fine, yes.
A voice call vote so that we have the calendar approved moving forward. All in favor of the calendar as presented for the 2023?
Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
I didn't have anyone that made the motion or seconded it.
That's okay. Oh, we didn't.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for 2023.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion and a support on the floor to approve. All in favor of approving the meeting dates for 2023 calendar year, please say yes?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has been approved, so we do have a calendar. And once again, just remember that we do need to communicate if you're not going to be available for a meeting. We do obviously have liaisons available as well, or, not liaisons, I'm sorry, alternates available as well to fill in. Next up would be any other business that we have?
I do not have anything else.
With no other business? And then we would have the staff and the board member report?
I can report on a few amendments, city code and zoning ordinance amendments, not necessarily affecting this group, but just for your information. The design guidelines were adopted by the City Council since your last meeting, as was the ordinance to implement those. So that's mainly going to be a planning commission and staff function, but just so you're aware, the downtown design guidelines cover the downtown area. They are available on the downtown Berkeley website, if you're interested. And that was approved by City Council for a second reading at their last meeting. Also, so that you're aware, new grading ordinance was adopted into the city code. That's going to be mainly a staff function, but just to let you know. And then also, short-term rentals. We codified the process that we'd kind of been informally operating under of requiring short-term rentals to register, in most cases, as rentals and obtain the proper inspections and licenses. If you want to look at it further, that's also available on the December 5th council meeting. It was approved at second reading there as well. And then the last item that I will note is, we did kick off our parking study. That's in conjunction with the Downtown Development Authority, and it's going to be looking at parking strategies for the downtown, kind of as their half of the project. But as the city's half of the project, we're going to start exploring parking requirements, and that's prefacing our upcoming zoning ordinance update, which we will be kicking off here in the first quarter of 2023. So I may be asking some of you to potentially join a steering committee. So if anyone has a particular interest, please let me know.
That is something that we need.
Yes, it's going to be a complete, the parking and then the ordinance would be a complete rewrite as well.
Yes, yes, thank you.
I believe there's something on murals as well? Did I see that?
So murals was something that was being examined before I got here. It was, it's noted in the regular community development monthly report. There hasn't been any recent action on that, but I do anticipate that we would look at that a little bit closer when we do the zoning ordinance update.
I thought I saw something with text.
Yes, you did.
Okay, the liaison report, Mr. Henen?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, also mention the parking study that has started. We did have one meeting of the steering committee already that, I'm a member of that committee. I think it was a very productive meeting, and just wanted to draw attention that a time hasn't been set yet, but probably in January or February, there will be a public meeting for input into the process. Very good.
Anyone here from the public wish to speak? If not, also, and thank you very much for sending all the training.
Information.
Information, the emails about training and continuing education. If there are no other comments or questions from anyone here, I would like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season, safe and happy new year. And we will officially call the meeting tonight to a close during the meeting. Thank you.